First, Planning Board meeting. Robin McDonald will be recording for the minutes and El Cat will be taping for further viewing. I'd ask if anybody in the audience has any affilia-- I mean, any recordings or any affiliations that you have? Nothing? No press today. Good. Let's say we open with our 6:00 public hearing for signed bylaw and rules and regulations for Article 4 Town Meeting.
Do we have to read them?
Usually she puts it right in front of my face. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 21st, 2014 at 6:00 in the Town Hall Meeting Room 60 Center Square to discuss a proposed bylaw change related to signage as to be placed on the town meeting warrant scheduled for October 27th, 2014. The entire proposal was available for viewing in the Planning Board and Clerk's offices.
Yeah. That's what I asked. I asked the audience first.
And Marilyn Richards.
Oh, and I believe Marilyn Richards will be presenting this article at Town Meeting. She wants to come on up and discuss any--
We've already presented it to you, so I'm going to present it to these people. Is that okay?
Well, you really need to--
I need to sit at the table?
We would like it.
Sorry, guys, you have to look at my back.
And you have to--
It's a beauty.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Marilyn Richards. I'm a member of the East Long Meadow Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. I serve on that committee with Mary Fleihive Dixon, Ned Schwartz, Ralph Page, Tyde Richards. We are-- the subject matter of this hearing tonight is Section 5.8 Signs. And the entire-- the way the bylaw reads, the way the warrant reads for next week's town meeting, the entire section for signs will be replaced by the proposed section that we're discussing tonight. The reason why that's happening is because there have been format changes throughout the entire bylaw. And it made it easier just to replace one with the other. However, there are no real substantive changes in the content or in the intent of what's being proposed next week at Town Meeting. There are sections within the signed bylaw that deal with signs in the various districts, residential, business, commercial, industrial, garden, park, whatever. And all that language is the same. However, to be more uniform, to be more user-friendly, we took sections that applied but were not actually written under, say, business or commercial, and we put them all in order so that a resident or an applicant can look at the bylaw who is, you know, if they're proposing a sign change in the commercial district, for instance, they can look under commercial district and see what their needs are for signage in that district. In full disclosure, there are two areas that the committee did suggest some changes. And the Planning Board did accept those changes. They are not substantive, but they are different than what's currently written in the bylaw. The one change is under the section of Business Signs, and there is a subsection that addresses gasoline, filling stations, and garages. Now, the bylaw years back felt that this particular use had subuses within its major use and that their signage on their structure could be broken up into a number of smaller signs. And as long as the total number of square footage didn't exceed the amount that was required for that particular-- or approved for that particular use. The committee felt that with changes in technology, we will be dealing with electric charging stations and also compressed natural gas filling stations. And we felt that that language should be added into the bylaw so that when those signs come in in the future, that there's no problem. And so those-- that language has been added, but really not any more substantive than the intent of the current bylaw with respect to signage for the gasoline filling station. The other section where the committee did add some new language as well was under the last section that dealt with political message and/or nonprofit event lawn signs. The bylaw currently addresses election signs and it currently addresses political message signs. However, it was the feeling of the committee that the bylaw is currently silent with respect to the nonprofit event signs, the lawn signs, the tag sale signs that are all over the place. So it was the committee's feeling to at least address the size of these signs, and they're limited to six square feet. And we are requesting that the bylaw require a date, which is usually in the signs when they are placed on property, and that the individual place them two weeks before the event and remove them two to three days after the event. So that's really all the change that's taken place. The rest is format moving sections to make them more uniform, but the content and the intent is the same as it is right now. Any questions?
I've read this over several times now, and I think it's much clearer than it used to be. You know, the old no accessory or non-accessory sign, yada, yada, it's just very confusing.
All signs.
So just saying signs are allowed under these conditions makes it a lot more palatable. And I think it's much clearer. I like it.
I would tend to agree. It is a lot clearer. It seems to be a lot easier to go to your specific section. If you're looking at the industrial garden park, you go there. It's basically listed out what you can and can't do. I do like the temporary banner being added, the tag sale signs. I think that's important. A lot of people have questions on those, and they want to be able to put them up. And I think addressing it was a good idea.
Since I'm on the committee, I support everything that Marilyn said.
Good job.
Good job, Marilyn.
Seems like you guys definitely did your homework. It's definitely a lot easier to read. I think it's a good thing.
You've got to open this up to--
Oh. Can I open this up to the public? Anybody have any comments or questions? Sir, state your name and address for the--
I was questioning in my own mind the enforcement of all of these regulations that have been developed. I have a real question as to is that a practical thing to look for? I've seen signs up, it seems, forever with tag sales. Staple to telephone poles, stuck out yards, continuation. It's just something that I have recognized, and I have a question about it. I'd like some input or answer to that, but I have a little sympathy for you.
I can answer, I think. And then you can add if you want. Our enforcement now is definitely something that we're definitely working on. If there is something that you do see, you can always call the building inspector and state your claim. If Marilyn has anything else she can add.
I was just going to say our bylaws are only as good as the enforcement of them.
Absolutely.
And we have, you know, from time to time, there have been issues that have been overlooked, but that doesn't take away from the important need of having a set of standards in place to be able to at least refer to and hopefully encourage, empower somebody to enforce the bylaw.
I'd rather pick it up here than at the Town Meeting.
If I may--
Thank you.
Through the Chair. With your concern with regards to tag sale signs, I think it's crucial that they added in that the date of the event is listed. Because if the event's listed as October 20th, once it hits October 23rd, if the sign's not down, the sign can be removed. You know, it's one of those where at least then you know when the event's taking place, and you just don't have a sign, a tag sale sign for a month sitting up there, and you're just not quite sure if the tag sale's happened or not.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second for further discussion?
Any discussion from the board?
Bringing it back to the board, the only thing I noticed, and I'm only going to ask Marilyn because you were on the board previously, and for clarification purposes, I noticed there's a difference between industrial signs and industrial garden park. One, industrial, we can't require the sign to be less than 100 square feet. Industrial garden park, it cannot be more than 100 square feet. Do we know-- I mean, obviously, there was a reasoning for this. Is it--
Well, the-- all I remember years back, the industrial zone was always our most relaxed zone. And the oldest zone, it had the larger manufacturing companies that were definitely bigger in size and could handle signs that were larger. And for the purpose of a sign advertising the location, if it were a huge building setback, a larger sign would make sense. The industrial garden park has additional criteria based on its pristine look, and the feeling is that the way the park is set up, just like the way the town is set up, we're not that huge, we're not that far from anything that we can't see a sign 100 square feet or less. So I believe that when the industrial garden park was created, which was after the industrial zone--
Right.
--they were more realistic about signage.
Okay.
That would be my take.
Anything else?
We talked about one thing that, and I can't for the life of me remember it. Remember that we were going to put-- because it's in--
Oh.
Do you remember? I was going to put it at the beginning.
I mean, the only change I had had the last time was under Section 5.90, Political Message. Subsection D, we said the sign had to be removed the way it was listed within two days of the event, and I had said two days after the event. I don't know how it got printed.
It got printed--
Another--
Within two days after the event.
Okay.
So it is after--
And which section are you reading, George? Election sign?
Yeah. 5.90 E-- no, sorry, D. 5.90 D.
So the-- I missed that one. The warrant reads--
The warrant says within two days after the event.
Which is correct.
Which is--
Which is correct.
Okay.
I think the other thing we had talked about, Robin, was the gasoline signs. It's listed under the business district right now, but it's also allowed in the industrial district.
Maybe that was it. I remember there was something in my--
Well, it's covered, I think. At this point, to modify this--
Yeah.
It's printed in the warrant. If we modify it, we can't wait for reading. And that'll keep us there for another half hour.
Is the use allowed in both places?
Yes, it is.
Okay. This addresses-- it's under business, which is, I guess, the primary location for the use.
Exactly.
But I would think that as long as it's addressed in both cases in the bylaw--
Yeah.
--then we should be okay.
I know what it was. Ground signs.
What about them?
It's mentioned in the business district, but not in the industrial district.
In terms of being allowed?
Doesn't mention anything about a ground sign. And if you remember, that's-- that was one of the issues that happened before, that you had to keep going back and back. Because a ground sign is allowed in every district, at least that's what the board has always done.
Now, the commercial district, it references one ground sign. And it gives criteria for that.
Yep.
Industrial garden park, it does also. And Gulf Presidential.
It doesn't explicitly exclude ground signs in industrial.
No, it doesn't exclude them, but it also doesn't say anything. All right, let me-- In the commercial, it does. In the business, it does.
It really does. Because it says signs shall only be permitted in industrial, subject to the following conditions.
Right.
Okay. Now, it's interesting, it does give signs shall conform to setback side yards and rear yard requirements. So it addresses a ground sign. It just doesn't state that it's allowed.
I mean, as long as, you know, as long as the board is going to continue the way they did before.
I see-- I don't see that as a major issue.
But that's what we were talking about.
I think we bring this forwards the way it is right now. And then if we need to modify it slightly, we can go to annual town meeting.
I agree with that.
I agree too.
But just so that I'm correct, the current bylaw, which I have a copy of here, doesn't specifically under industrial--
It doesn't.
No.
Okay.
And that's when Ralph and I were, you know, just throwing things around, I knew there was one other thing, and that was it.
Okay.
No difference.
No. You didn't take anything out that was already there.
Right.
Motion was made and seconded.
To close.
To close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to recommend the article--
What is it?
Is it 15?
Article 12 of the special town meeting warrant, that the planning board recommend Article 12, the special town meeting warrant.
Is that some subject to change? That's it, right? That's final draft? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Is it the board wishes, or is it your wishes that I present this at Town Meeting, or Ralph, do you want to do it?
I think you did a wonderful job.
I think we know what the room question is. Can we get someone to do besides me?
It would be my recommendation that we allow Marilyn present it, and the board be there to back it up 100%.
I'm agreeable to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And my one comment about the motion. Can we reference the warrant, since it's printed in, you know, it's completely in the warrant? Can we reference the warrant rather than reading the entire motion?
Oh, yeah, the motion's already been done, and I've already sent it in, and that's what it says, and the reading be waived.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to waive the reading.
I know. Well, you can read it all if you want.
No, thank you. It's too long.
Yeah, I did that today.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Actually, do you want a copy of that?
Sure.
Well, we should-- the Chair, we should remind people that there is a town meeting next Monday, and that we do need a quorum at that town meeting. And so, since we're trying to keep our contribution to that short, I would ask people to try to make the time to show up so that we can do it in one night instead of coming back and back and back until we get a quorum.
I agree.
We got our 6:15 for public hearing for a special permit for My Main Squeeze at 48 Shaker Road.
Come on up. The Planning Board of the Town of East Long Meadow will hold a public hearing on October 21st, 2014 at 6:15 on application of special permit submitted by Cassandra. Could you help me out here?
Chair Swallow.
Excuse me?
Chair Swallow.
Chair Swallow. Thank you very much. To open a juice bar at 48 Shaker Road. Information related to this application is on file with the Planning Board and available for review by the public. Thanks again.
He's a comedian on the side. Say your name and address for the camera.
She's done it twice.
And then, basically, what you want to do, My Main Squeeze.
Cassandra Cheriswolo in 133 Melwood Ave. I want to open a juice bar, so all fresh, healthy juices and smoothies. So just a healthy food store.
Sweet. Nice. Does the board have any questions?
What's in there now?
That's where the Redstone--
Redstone Creamery is going, is leaving there?
Yes.
Okay.
She actually shared space with her.
Okay.
So now she's going to take over a little.
Okay, got it. Just clarifying for-- people know where to find it.
And the--
It's an advertisement.
Yeah. The interior plan is with the--
Right. And we have sufficient parking. Mr. McDonald, each--
Oh, in here?
Robin? Thanks. I'm not used to these folders. Parking requirements--
Existing on.
Okay. Excellent.
Interior doesn't look like anything's changing. There isn't much of a change in the interior at all.
Not much at all. They're changing the items inside.
Yeah.
Remove the ice cream, add the juice.
The only thing they have questioned is, see no sign permit?
Nope. Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
Just slow-moving on that one.
So we're ready for that.
Do we want to open it up to the public?
Yeah.
I'd like to open it up to the public. If there's any questions? Anyone?
Bring it back to the board.
Hearing none, I bring it back to the board.
Is there anything going here?
Any questions?
Through the Chair, did you also say you're going to be doing some gelato?
Yeah, in the summer. Not yet, though.
Good. That'd be awesome. Just wanted to clarify if it's going to--
You want to place your order now, Ralph? If they got large July or July-- No problem with this. It's very similar to what was there. I think it's fine.
I'm good with it. I would actually make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold on. Sorry, any questions?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the special permit for My Main Squeeze on Shaker Road.
That just--
I will second that.
I'm glad you made the motion, George. My wife would kill me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Good to go.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
When you're ready for your sign, just come on in, or you can give it to--
It did, it did. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Pull it through with this one.
Oh.
All righty, miss.
We're going a little early, aren't we?
We got a 6:30. Do you want to do a couple of waivers?
Yes. Yeah, for sure.
Let's take these first one for Insight Sales. Steven A. Yakavone, 180 Shaker Road.
Yeah. That's it.
This one here, okay.
Danny's the owner.
Oh, I was reading this, okay.
Mr. Yakavone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yakavone, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Those dyslexics need a little help. Property owner, Daniel Barak, 157 Summers Road, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Insight Sales. Owner of business is Steven Yakavone. Business owner's address is 11 Overbrook Road, East Long Meadow. Property address is 143 Shaker Road. Door E, Suite 200E. Property district is industrial, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours are by appointment only. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Date of last parking plan is a question mark. Summary of business operation, buying, selling, transfer of firearms by Internet, gun shows, and by appointment only on the site. The application's been signed and dated October 11th, 2014.
For any questions? No. State your name and address for the record, and what you plan on doing?
Steven Yakavone, 11 Overbrook Road, East Long Meadow. Name of the business is Insight Sales, and pretty much states everything we're going to do. It's going to be a very privately operated sales office. Original waiver was at my house, and the police department was uncomfortable with that because of a bylaw. So we moved to an industrial area so that we could satisfy them. Permits have already been filed with the state. The FFL has already been obtained, and we're just ready to get rolling.
Cool. Any questions from the board?
It's a good location, something like that.
I've spoken with the police department. They're happy with it.
If they're happy with the security at the site and everything else, then I'm happy.
Any questions from the audience?
The only thing I would say through the Chair is, just as long as it's contingent upon all permits through the police department being required. My only other question is, if you've already received a waiver, and now he's going to be at a business zone, does that waiver still stand for his house?
It's just for the office, if you want it for the office.
You can keep it for the office.
For home office, okay. Yeah, that's--
Might as well keep it.
For bills and stuff like that.
Bills? What are those?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Great.
Good to go.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
See you this week.
Yes, you will.
What's going on there, Ralph?
These guys are here. Can I go out of order for you, real quick?
Yes.
Because these guys are here, so they can leave. So last one. Waiver for 180 Shaker Road.
Check, I like those.
Tree Olive.
Request for waiver, site plan review. Property owner is Ralph Zepick.
Zepi.
Zepi.
Zepi Key.
Zepi, yeah. I do this with everybody.
It's not my name, so--
Wait till you get to hearing.
Yeah, wait till you get to my name.
Owner's address is 126 Meadow Brook Road, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are here. Name of proposed business is Tree Olive.
Trey.
Trey Olive. French?
Italian.
Italian, excuse me.
I was going to say olive oil is French.
They did it with olive oil.
Your honor.
I'm doing my best, and I don't have a lot to work with.
I'm right next to you.
Owner of business is--
Pino Maruca.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. A wait, just more here. Michael Maruca. Alexandro Falco. You've got Italian names. They're not French, right? Property address, 180 Shaker Road, Middle East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district is B, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. Number of employees are three, including the owner. Date of last parking plan is blank. Summary of business, retail and wholesale olive oil sales, as well as sale of olive oil products and accessories. The application's been signed and dated October 16th, 2014.
Okay. State your name and addresses for the record, and basically tell us what you guys want to do.
So, Michael Maruca, 24 Stone Hill Road, East Long Meadow. And I'm Pino Maruca, 118 Lee Street, East Long Meadow.
Basic summary of what you guys want to do?
Basically, open up a small retail area, and it's right now we're using for storage, and sell olive oil to the public.
Cool. Any questions?
Yeah, is this going to replace the consignment shop, or where is the retailer going to be?
It's kind of sandwiched in between railings, awnings, and more, and the main attraction, I believe.
Okay, so it's on the side of the building there?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, just trying to clear my--
And added attractions is in the front.
Front, yeah.
And then in the back is the awning, gentlemen.
Right. And this is in the middle?
Yes.
And it's currently empty?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Sounds good. Sounds good, sounds interesting.
Thank you.
Where, where do you get your olive oil from?
Uh, our grandparents have a big farm in, uh, southern Italy, so we import it directly from them.
In France, right?
Through France.
I couldn't either.
Any questions?
No, no questions, just, it's an alive use in a business zone. Be nice to, uh, have you in there.
Yeah, great.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm very good, very good.
Absolutely. Positive?
Positive. With names like that, how could you... It's gotta be authentic.
My only thing is, um, everything looks great. The only thing is when you guys come for a sign, you just gotta get a permit through Ralph.
Okay.
Which is not a big deal, so...
Right.
Great.
Great.
Alrighty. Um, bring it back to the board.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Dana, we'll give you a call, um, probably tomorrow, the decision will be written and you can just pick up your paperwork and get your business certificate from the clerk.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
See you guys.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
Probably ready for six thirty. So, I will take the six thirty. See, they're out there.
Here.
Yeah, they are, they're out there.
Just outside.
Doorman?
No.
No?
Tim Mumpet.
Here's a regular on her show.
Alrighty, I will call the six thirty meeting. Attorney's, uh, Martin in the back. Um, for Bay Path University.
We have Mike Crowley and Mike DuPape.
Hello, everybody.
Aye.
We have a notice to be read in?
Yep.
Need all your help, Ralph?
Uh, letter to Robin McDonald, Director of Planning, Zoning, Conservation, County of East Long Meadow, 60 Center Square. Uh, regarding Bay Path University, signed permit application. Dear Ms. McDonald, enclosed please sign, execute signed permit application along with its addendum, workers' compensation insurance affidavit, and color copies of proposed signs. We would appreciate it if you would have this matter added to the agenda on October 21st, 2014, Plenty Board Meeting. Please feel free to contact this office with any questions or concerns regarding this matter. Nicholas Wata. Is there anything else that needs to be read?
No, the, um, signs are there, though.
Okay, great.
Okay, you guys are here, we can discuss what, um...
Okay, Robin, are we gonna do the, the venue to the site plan next, after the signs?
Yeah, we'll do the signs first.
Alright. So, do you guys miss us?
Yes.
Very good.
Place looks great.
Buildings coming along very nicely.
Well, Mike is doing a fantastic job and running it and Mike's doing a great job paying for it, so, uh, it's a good...
I'm glad I have the role.
Grant, so that's good.
Okay, so, we have one, uh, question, uh, the comment that we, uh, we'll talk all about the sign, but there is going to be a name associated with one of the signs. Uh, that hasn't been publicly announced yet, so if you gentlemen, you know...
Good time to do it.
It's, it's, it's all on, it's all on the document, so we're not, we're not hiding it, but, you know, we're just trying to be discreet about that yet, so...
I think that kinda went away, just nobody...
Elcat zooming in on it?
Elcat just zoomed in on it.
Oh, well, we can take care of that. Okay. Anyway, it was a request by the, the university to try and, you know, at least...
Make a note.
Respect, respect that until, uh...
Until you make the announcement.
Until we make the announcement for the family.
I won't read the name of the sign.
That's why I jumped right in, Ty.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Um, so, we would appreciate that. So, uh, as you know, we're here, uh, we're here today for two reasons and, uh, the first is, you know, as we discussed the various times we visit you, we'd be back about the signage for the property. And we have before you, um, the proposed signage. Uh, we can start with the, uh, signs that are, we propose to be placed on Denzlow and on, um, Shaker. And this is, I think it's, was submitted with the package, I don't know if everyone's seen it, have you seen this?
Yeah, we got that one.
Would you like that?
I'll take it.
Anybody else wanna? Ty?
Yeah, I am, I'm good, thank you very much.
George, you're all set with this?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
They're all the same.
So, this signage, uh, you know, again, uh, just for the record, reminding that we're, we're talking about the area occupied by the letters, uh, in terms, meets the signage requirements for East Long Meadow. Um, we have proposed on the site plan that was submitted, uh, with the application, the two locations specifically, uh, where we'd like those to be and Mike's got a blow up, but you've got in the package that was submitted, the exact locations. Now, point those out, Mike, here. So, you can see they, one matches up with what's gonna be the main entrance where everyone, uh, not everyone, but the majority of students and, you know, visitors are gonna be entering the property and the other complements, uh, the process, uh, out, taking advantage of the corner lot. And one might ask, two versus one on a ground sign. And I think it is a very valid, uh, request by us to have two, given that we have frontage on two main thoroughfares and that the bylaw says within 10 feet of the frontage. Now, this board, uh, has had lots of discussions recently about a lot having, being able to have more than one side designated a side yard or rear yard and we're taking the position that we have frontage on both of these. And that it's very important, uh, to the college. I think you'll agree that these are very tasteful signs with the brick pillars and they'll be ground lit, right, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, you know, they're not gaudy or obtrusive or large or neon or anything like that, but it's very important, you know, a lot of people will be coming from Connecticut, you know, uh, this is, this PA program draws people from all over, uh, the country and people live, you know, they're gonna be living as close as they can, they'll be living in Connecticut, they'll be living in Springfield there, East Long Meadow, and they'll be coming, so it's critical that they have some identification, particularly for direction and safety on Shaker, which is, uh, you know, is a subject of, uh, a lot of traffic each way. And then, of course, the main entrance for, you know, the students, faculty, et cetera, on Denzlow. So, I know Ralph's got his bylaw out and I think the bylaw says what I said it says and, uh, I think it's a fair interpretation. We've got, you know, there's, and I know it's not, uh, it's not, uh, Hornbook law to say, well, there's lots of places to have that because places are grandfathered in and other places have it, but I think that, you know, it's, it's a reasonable interpretation, uh, of the bylaw to allow us to have a sign on each side. Other than that, the sign, uh, that is over the main portico of the building and the one in the back where people are gonna come in and comply, again, you know, we, you know, I should've said at the beginning, we've met with the plan, the, the town officials on two occasions. We, you know, we revised the lettering, we revised the size to make sure that everything complies that way. Um, so, I, I don't think either of those are an issue, they're gonna be tastefully lit. Mike, again, what, how is the lighting, washing or is it downlighting or...
Uh, we're, we're still working on that, actually. We're, we're thinking about wash light, Jim, that will wash down as opposed to uplighting.
Okay.
It's still in progress.
Alright, so, but in any event, it's, you know, it's not gonna be anything, it's gonna be a distraction to, to traffic or people and it's not gonna be, you know, uh, anywhere near as, let's say, as Milton Bradley across the street by, by virtue of...
And we've also been working with Sergeant Bates regarding how we're going to address the building in terms of, uh, mounting the address of the building, housing the building and, um, we've got some concepts of, uh, how we're gonna do that. Agnoli Sign is gonna present this, goes to us tomorrow, I think, at our job meeting and then, once we have that, we'll meet with Sergeant Bates again. I told him that I would keep him abreast of how we're gonna do it. Cause, um, one of his concerns is not so much that people in the town, um, public safety officials, um, don't know where the building is, everybody knows where the building is. However, in particular ambulance drivers who, you know, rotate in and out of those positions frequently, um, we wanna make sure that they can easily identify with the building and that's another, one of the key reasons why we think it's very important to have the signs on, on both the entranceway and on the corner. It's a, it's a public safety issue as well. Um, so, if we can find a way to mount the lettering of the street address on the building, it would be out here at the front portico on, on what we call the spandrel glass area. Um, and, um, again, we're, we're working on a mock-up of that, we'll, we'll have that in the next couple of days.
We, I was gonna, excuse me, we reserved, uh, right away when we acquired the property, we work with the town, it's 1 Denzlow Road and so, oh, and E Denzlow Road. So, that's, uh, you know, sort of, uh, a little bit of a, you know, connection with the building itself, 1 Denzlow Road, uh, everyone will recognize that, but, you know, as Mike just emphasized, it's good for public safety for everybody to know where to go and, you know, this, uh, it's gonna be, um, an active, uh, building during the day when classes are, places, you know, gonna be, what, a couple hundred people there on any given day, so, um, which is great for everyone, it's gonna bring a lot of activity, uh, but it's, you know, for safety reasons, we wanna do that. The last component of the application is just the directional signs in the parking lot where students park, where faculty park, how the, you know, the parking lot is laid out one way, go this way, um, and those are, and then where visitors park. So, those are directional signs, I think they're, uh, you know, not even...
That have been required, requested by the police department.
Right, it is, so, um, and I, I think a strict reading again of the bylaws is this is a directional, not a sign per se. So, uh, that's all we're doing is directing traffic, but enter and exit, uh, one way on the flow, where the visitors park, where the students park. Will students have a, like a decal or something to park?
Don't have that.
Yes, they will. Yeah, so, um, the Bay Path Security will be responsible for that and everyone will be issued, so, it won't be open to the public parking unless you're visiting. So, you know, we're looking, again, for the two signs, uh, on the two streets, building signage, uh, you have the exact description and how it's gonna be constructed, Agnoli's doing all this and they're, they're a high-quality company. I think it's very tastefully done on both sides of the building and then the directional signs.
And also, if I can just interject, the ground signs that they're proposing, they're small. They're 25 square feet each. So, the, the amount allowed is 50 square feet, so they're really, they're not large.
Thank you for reminding me of that, Ralph. So, together, they're the size of 150 square foot ground sign that we could have somewhere that, uh, helps, uh, in the rationalization for, uh, the location. You know, we could have one much bigger sign, but we felt that this was, uh, again, more tasteful and more helpful and contributes to the safety. So, that's the, uh, overall summary of it. Uh, have any questions for us?
I don't have any at this time, but I'd like to open it up to the public.
No, no.
Not public here?
Just for us? Just for us. So, through the chair.
Just sign application.
George, you wanna start?
Um, you know, my only thought is that all the other corner businesses in industrial garden park, you're thinking attain, um, the printer, um, the, the two down at the other end of industrial, um...
Northeast Metrology over there.
Yeah, well, it's not Northeast Metrology anymore, they're out of business, but...
Name Pep?
Tarbell.
Yeah.
Same thing, same building.
Yeah. Um, a lot of them either have it diagonally at the corner, okay, to meet the one sign requirement. I'm just thinking if we open this up, um, there's a number of businesses that may come back in and say they want two signs. It's, it's not a unique thing. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but I think we need to consider that there are at least three...
No, there's more than that. One, two...
Four.
Three, four.
Four, five, six, yeah, six corner businesses there. So, not, not that everybody's gonna come rushing in to get an extra sign, but just, you know, we need to be aware that we're setting a precedent here.
Or, or if I could, uh, just chime in a little on that, one thing to keep in mind is, you know, with businesses that have employees that come to work every day, you know, here every year and a half, there's a turnover of a couple hundred students. So, it's not like you're on automatic pilot going or coming to visit to interview or try, you know, going through the application process, so this, you know, that's a little different than, you know, coming to an industrial park every day and going to work or being a salesperson who comes and calls on it.
Well, you know, you could argue that attain has a changing client base every day and, uh, the folks on, across the street from them, the office building, has a changing client base every day. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, okay, I'm just saying we, we oughta consider that we are setting a precedent and it would be difficult to, uh, turn down somebody else who comes in with two smaller signs. I mean, I think the signs are gonna look good, you know, and I think it, it makes sense in this case, we just want us to be aware that we're setting a precedent.
Through the chair, um, the sign located on the corner, it appears to be facing Denzlow Road. Um, if your argument is...
It's double sided, though.
It's double sided, Ralph.
Facing Shaker.
Yeah, that's not really facing Shaker, I mean, I would say a sign located like this would be facing Shaker.
But it's a double sign, so it's like this, so it sees it both ways coming out of Shaker.
It's meant to capture the traffic heading on the south.
Yeah, it, it's, it's designed to see, cause if, if you're coming down Denzlow and you get to see that sign, you've gone past.
Exactly, exactly.
You'll miss this.
You're like this one, you're like this one.
And if it was the other way, it would be only for P's Road.
Well, you'll miss the other one.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to go through my head, if, if your argument is one ground sign per, uh, front property, um, to me, that would say it should face the front property. Um, but again, what you're saying is if you're going across the front property, you can see it.
And we do the same thing here, you know, because we wanna get the traffic coming both ways. And, uh, in my experience in the last few years and going, almost everyone turns their side this way to capture the traffic.
Capture the traffic both ways. I, I think it's actually very helpful from a safety standpoint, too, so that people, when they're driving down the street, either Denzlow, either way on Denzlow or either way on Shaker.
They're not gonna drive...
Exactly. You don't want them turning, pulling U-turns to, oops, I passed. So, you want them to be able to pick up the visualization of the sign well in advance of them having to make a turn into the property or onto Denzlow. So, I think it's really a public safety issue.
Otherwise, if someone...
That's the reason, that's one of the reasons why we laid it out that way. We had originally contemplated perhaps even putting it, as you said, Ralph, facing Shaker Road. Road. We were going to route it into a retaining wall almost, but we said it wouldn't have any effect. People would be driving by the building and not know where it was.
First of all, it's too far set back and then it was, you can't see it.
All due respect, it's hard to miss that building.
Yeah.
But not to know what it is.
You need to know what it is.
Wow, there's a big building. I wonder what that could be.
You go by Milton Bradley, that's a big building, right?
With regards to the directional signs, I know Officer Bates had requested quite a few of those. I have no problems whatsoever with that. With the ones on the building, I don't have a problem with. I'm just trying to grasp, and I keep reading the bylaw the way it's worded, and I can see where it could be one sign per front property line. I could also see where it's one ground sign.
And I can see how you could see that.
Yes.
So I, you know, I will grant you that it's subject to interpretation, but the fact that it's subject to interpretation, I think, gives us the opportunity to request both signs.
Which is probably a good topic for the zoning review committee meeting.
Well, I also like the fact that you've taken the signs and you made them smaller so that the total square footage still conforms to the bylaw.
And to George's point, I don't think many businesses are going to say, oh, let me downsize my sign by half in order to get two little ones as opposed to...
Well, I like the idea that they at least try to consolidate it to keep it within as opposed to, you know, increasing the amount, increasing the size of all the signage.
And we have to acknowledge Robin for giving us some good guidance on that.
I mean, it would be my thought, if the board chooses to approve it, that it is written into it that the total square footage of both of these cannot exceed 50 square feet because, not that it would happen, but in five years, if the members on the board, the school comes back and says, you know, each one's allowed to be 50, we want to make them bigger.
That's fair, Ralph, and that's why we went back and had Agnoli put the exact dimensions. That's part of our submission, so the approval would be approved as submitted, not, you know, go put a sign up after that. I think you'll be very pleased with how it looks. I think you're, everyone's acknowledging the building is looking quite nice right now.
It's going along great. That's perfect. I like the both signs there and definitely this one here coming down Shaker. Sometimes people will just probably, I mean, they'd see the building, but if you're not familiar...
Why do I win?
You know, you'd drive right by, you know, so...
And driving by causes actually a hazard because now people have to come back again.
Exactly.
In both places. I mean, here you're going to, what, pull a U-turn on Pease? That's just going to be a disaster. Here, there's really no place, you know, but other than on the curbs, and that's not good either, so...
Denzil Road's good, too, because it gives you plenty of warning to get in.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the approval of the building inspector.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it with the note that, like we had stated, is approved that the signs' total gross area cannot exceed the 50 square feet of the both ground signs.
Agreed. Agreed. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
No, that's all signs. That's the ground signs, that's the directional signs, and it's the building sign. The front building sign and the building sign over the entrance in the back all meet the requirements. They don't go over. The one in the back is less than 50% of the one on the front of the building. So there's no violations of any type of square footage whatsoever. Okay. So I'll just do one decision on all of the signs.
Could I just see that, one of those elevations for a moment? Because I just want to point out to everybody where we're talking about doing the address of the building. If we can figure out an appropriate way to do it, this is where it's going to go. If we can't, then I told Sergeant Bates that I would work with him. We're probably going to put an address somewhere out here and again, somewhere up in this neck of the woods, up on the northwest corner of the property. Again, for the same reasons that I talked about before, public safety. But I'll work with Sergeant Bates, but as I understand it, Robin, you confirmed this, that does not count against signage.
No, that's not a sign. The address is not a sign.
So Sergeant Bates will understand where we're going to put these signs going forward. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. Is that in conservation area?
That's, they're working with Conservation Commission and let them decide what it is. They're fully aware of the issues regarding conservation.
Just wanted to make sure that you understand, just because we approve it, if it's against the conservation...
No, they approved, Conservation Commission approved that they knew where we were putting these signs. This ground sign had always been in the plan.
Okay. Second point of interest is...
Is, I don't know if you want to have him read this from Rob, please?
You can read it for me if you want to. A letter dated October 17th, 2014 from Robert, this is French.
Levesque.
Levesque.
To Robin McDonald, Director of Planning and Zoning and Conservation, Towne Eastlong Meadow Planning Board, 60 Center Square. Regarding request to amend site plan review, proposed omission of fencing around Stormwater Basin, Denzil Road and Shaker Road. Dear Ms. McDonald and Board Members, on behalf of our client, Bay Path University, our offices herein request to amend the site plan review to omit a proposed fence around the Stormwater Basin as shown in the original plan set. A wooden guardrail is proposed between the basin and the adjacent parking area. Included within, you will find four copies of the revised plan depicting the aforementioned changes and a construction detail of the proposed wooden guardrail. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please feel free to contact our office at your convenience. Sincerely, Robert Vescovitz, President.
So unfortunately, Rob couldn't be here tonight because he had a previous commitment, but this is, as you may recall, from the original site plan, one of the requests was to put a fence around the retention pond.
You can't climb over it this way.
I'm sorry. So one of the things that was incorporated into the approval of the site design review was a fence around the detention pond. And as we got through the building process, two things. One, the parking area comes fairly close to the grassy area right before it. So looking at it primarily from a safety standpoint, a chain link fenced was, which was what was requested and what was, is not as optimal for safety, particularly for people parking there. So in looking at that, and again, you know, we've said this from the beginning, you know, we're, a high priority for the university is, you know, the safety of students, of faculty, visitors, and anyone else who's coming in. So we looked at that, Mike and Rob and their team, and said, you know, it would be much stronger, safer to put a wooden railroad tie low fence that would stand a much further impact if something unfortunately and unforeseen happened. So Mike's got some pictures that were not submitted other than...
We're not exactly certain on color yet. That's the same fencing, George, that we're putting out here along wetland areas as well.
And this is the construction detail that we got?
That is exactly right.
So, and we showed Robin this when we were out on the site and it really, you know, you see this in one dimensional. You know, fence around the pond sounds like a great idea, you know, but when you actually get out there and you realize that the parking ends here and two feet away, you have the slope down into the bottom of the basin. Well, envision snowplows, you know, in the middle of winter, plowing two feet of snow. Where do they put it? Well, it's all going to, those fences, as we all know, are very fragile, you know, and we'd be replacing that fence once a week. And again, you know, we have light standards periodically throughout this area, shedding light onto the parking lot. Those would be continuously getting damaged. So we really think that it makes a heck of a lot more sense from a safety and a long-range operating standpoint to put a much more sturdy fence in that area. And then on the backside of the basin, we just don't think it's really necessary. It's not guarding against anything at that point. It actually, not having a fence would allow for wildlife and fowl to enter and out of it easier. Make it much more easier for us to maintain it properly.
And since no one's...
Visually, it'd be much more appealing as...
Nobody's parking, you know, there's no issue with safety on that side. You go around town, there's a lot of detention basins that don't have fences all around them. This is, you know, a budding up against that section which is going to be unoccupied. So we thought this would look nicer, be more consistent with what's there, and be safer and more practical.
And it's less than four feet, right? Four feet deep?
Yeah, you only have about a two-foot reveal.
Actually, I think what Robin was just asking is the detention basin, how deep is it?
Right. I don't think it's even four feet.
It's, I want to say it's three, Ralph, but...
Are there topo lines in your plan?
Please don't, I'm looking for that. I think if I remember right, when we were originally talking, it wasn't a real deep...
Are those one-foot contours or two-foot contours?
I can't read this. I don't know if there's contours on here. He doesn't have topos on there.
No, it looks like he's got contours in the basin.
It does, but I can't tell what the...
Okay.
If it's one foot, you're looking at a three feet.
Probably, yeah, probably one-foot contours.
Okay.
That's what the other plan was.
Okay, so, fine, nobody's going to walk in there and be over their head.
Exactly.
And it's, you know, it's all stone. It's really...
And there's relief from that as well. There's, you know, if you recall, when we received the approval on the First Amendment, when we came back in to create this additional parking, one of the requirements on the easement from Kinder Morgan for us, for allow us to do this, is that they didn't want a lot of water shedding from this onto the air, so we actually improved this with riprap. So the most this water, this retention pond is ever going to retain is something like two feet.
Okay. I have no problem with it.
So the actual retention pond is going to be riprap?
No, no, no. Just over here.
Just the overflow area, Ralph. Okay, so that's all, retention pond is grass line then?
Exactly. But there is rock in here, right?
Yeah.
It's stone.
Yeah, there's stone in there.
You got probably a four bay, yeah.
And that's a small parking lot over behind it, too. Yeah, we're just putting this in now. Kinder Morgan just finished all their work out here. I don't know if you saw that they...
They were there for a while.
They were there for a long time.
Big hole out there.
There was a big hole. But it's actually, it's actually to the benefit of everyone involved in terms of the way they have now changed their maintenance of the pipeline. They no longer have to come into this area and do that, so that's safer for everyone. They were very cooperative.
They see my property all the time.
Pardon me?
They're on my property all the time.
Well, they inspect all the time, but the valves that they have here that they were servicing, they're moving, so they no longer have to come into this area.
They took them out, actually, to accommodate this.
Yeah, I got 1,800 feet of their pipe on my property. They're all...
We'd love to get rid of off of ours, to be honest with you.
Get rid of mine, too.
Not going to happen.
That's the only place right around that retention pond that we're looking to remove the fence.
Correct.
Yes, and we're actually at, the wetland area is out here. Ralph, and we're actually putting, again, for public safety purposes, we're going to, and that was in the original plan, and we're putting that post and rail out here. It wasn't specified what type of fence we were going to put out there, but we're doing the same thing. Again, because it is so close to Denzil Road, we want to make sure that, you know, in the event of some occurrence, somebody coming off the road, that they...
That they'll have a barrier there.
I do think this new wood fence will give you a lot more protection than the chain link.
Makes way more sense. Well, I tell you, it's, the chain link's always going to be knocked down in the wintertime. This is going to look a lot better. It's not going to look so institutional. You know, provided that it's not a safety issue, I think it'd be great.
I think it's safer to have this type of...
Do we need to vote on accepting this?
Yes.
I think you...
You need to, first of all, determine that it's not substantial enough to require a full amendment to the site plan, which it's really not because you're just replacing something. So you need to vote on that and then vote on the actual change. And then I will attach, I need at least one of you to sign the new plan. I'll attach that to the approved plan from before.
So I'll make a motion to determine that this is a minor change to the site plan.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
So it's a minor change that doesn't need an amendment?
Correct.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to accept the change to the site plan.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
When do you plan an opening?
Previous.
They're ready.
January 1st, that's what I think, yeah.
January 1st, great.
We'll turn the building over December 15th.
So that's exciting. Students in there, January.
Great.
They've done a great job moving this project along in a very efficient manner.
And most of that...
I leave this with you.
I will provide you with a signed comment.
Robin, we need to keep these, right?
Please. You're welcome. Good seeing you again.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Hey, guys.
Yeah, just one is good.
Thanks, Tom.
Because I have the other ones.
Let me turn them. What am I, you say? But I picked up on, I'm glad you did. I think it looks great. It'll be nice.
Elastics always get lost. Okay. That'll be fine.
We got a 6:45.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, we're going to do a 6:45.
No, I'm fine, I'm just going to stick it in there.
Okay. We're going to hold a 6:45 now for Scott Parsons with U-Haul to discuss a franchise at 191 Industrial Drive. 91, I'm sorry.
It's strictly a discussion.
Is it a discussion or we have to, Robin?
Mm-hmm.
Is this discussion only?
Yes, he wants to be able to do that. He hasn't applied for a waiver yet, but...
So there's nothing to read into the record?
Nothing to read, and there was just, you're welcome. Good night, John.
Good night.
There was some questions as to whether or not it's an actual and allowed use. This location is the Eastlong Meadow Storage Facility that you just approved.
The new one's under construction.
It's already up and it's beautiful.
Yeah, is it operating already? Is it? Oh, good.
All right, well, state your name and address for the record and...
Name and address?
Please.
Scott Parsons, 878 Memorial Drive in Chicopee. I'm looking to award a dealership to Eastlong Meadow Storage as under accessory use. I looked into the zoning and bylaws, I didn't see anything in there, so I'm not really clear on it. And I just want to explain what a U-Haul dealership actually is. It's not just trucks all over the place, you know, cuts down on traffic, CO2 and environment, carbon footprint, and it provides service to the community. As far as if you were to rent a U-Haul truck now, you would have to drive all the way to Boston Road and then all the way back.
And they've done that.
And there was a lot of other things involved in a U-Haul franchise, like trailers and maybe some hitches and things of that sort, boxes and things like that.
They don't have a facility to do any hitches or repairs like that. Trailers, some dealers have trailers, some don't. We have state-of-the-art equipment that can vary what comes into a certain area, you know. Say, there's two cargo vans here and they're only allowed two cargo vans and a 10-foot truck, we can stop the other equipment from coming into that facility.
No cars or anything of that nature or no storage boxes or anything like that retail side?
No.
Well, on the retail side, basically what you're doing is you're going to have trucks available there that someone can go there and actually rent them.
Yep, and they can use it to fill their, fill their storage facility.
Wait a minute, we already had that discussion once before.
Yep.
Well, we had Taylor Rental come in looking to go into the Industrial Garden Park as a retail, renting out tools, and that's not an allowed use. So I'm not sure how we could say, well, a truck rental out of there being retail would be an allowed use. I just...
I'd have to agree with that. It is a retail facility. And just clarify for me again, you're not doing any repair to the vehicles there?
No.
Okay. But it would be a retail, a retail facility, retail store. Way back when, I remember referring to U-Haul stores, facilities as stores, but we don't, nobody else out there is renting vehicles, certainly. There's, I don't see vehicle rental in our list of the allowed uses anywhere. So I think that could be an issue for me, that I don't see it as an allowed use at this time.
Based on the fact that it's a retail from what you determined for Taylor Rental?
Yeah. If it were done, if it considered to be retail and if it was a business or industrial, it would probably be allowed.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, definitely.
But this is Industrial Garden Park.
Right.
And that's a different issue.
So it wouldn't fall under accessory use?
No, there's no accessory use listed for that. In fact, there's garaging, well, parking of commercial vehicles and of course, all U-Haul vehicles are commercial vehicles.
Except for the cargo vans. Cargo vans are just a four-wheel vehicle.
Do they have commercial plates?
No. The cargo vans are not, the six-wheel vehicles do.
Yeah, okay. But, you know, I don't see it as, it's garaging or parking, there's nothing in here about rental or that sort of thing, so, under accessory uses and certainly not under industrial, under business uses for Industrial Garden Park. So I would have an issue with that, unfortunately. I'm not sure it would fit in necessarily with the intent of the Industrial Garden Park either. You know, the only real retail there is the post office, and that's because it's the feds and we can't do anything about it.
Right.
You know, if there were an industrial site or a business site in town that would be appropriate for what you're trying to do, that would, you know, be a possibility. But this particular site, I couldn't agree with. Ralph?
I would agree with you. I think it would be retail. We've already had people try and come in under retail and we told them they had to go to a different district.
Yeah. You know, it's not their primary business.
Even though it's not the primary business.
Yeah, I got to be honest with you, I really think it's a great use for what you want to do. I love it. However, it doesn't seem to comply, so I can't support it.
I have to agree with Ty also. It's a great thing. We definitely need one around here, but we can't, not in industrial park.
Well, thanks for coming in and talking to us before you filed. Save us both some trouble.
Have a good night.
Thanks. You, too.
That's why I had him come in.
Totally, that just...
I think it's awesome. It just doesn't work.[1716.16]
Yeah, I was like, yeah, it'd be great. And then all of a sudden, I remembered that.
Right, and I thought of other, you know, the bylaw that you changed to allow ten percent retail in the.
I thought about that, too.
Industrial Garden District, but that was for the manufacturing that, that one particular business was creating, so.
Yeah, it did that.
That didn't fall in there either, and, um, I think it's great, too. But it was going to be online, um, services with the trucks at the facility, so if someone wanted, was moving and wanted to store things at the facility, they could come down, pick up the truck, go home, load it up, and bring it back, but.
Yeah. Now, it.
It falls right in the table rental.
Yeah. So, I mean, I know that one of the storage places in downtown, uh, has a truck that they loan out for free for people to bring stuff there, and that would not be renting the truck. It would not be a retail rental.
Right.
You know?
Cause no money would be exchanged.
Yeah, and, and certainly, that would not be the, the limit of the use of, of the place. So, I wanna rent a truck to do something completely different. I could still do it there, and, and that's, you know, there are, there are industrial lots in town that are available for, for that kind of thing.
Well, I think it was, um, more the storage facility that wanted to utilize.
The two businesses were handed in.
Yeah, together.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Wanted to offer as much to the public as they could to make them, you know, a little bit different than anybody else.
Okay, so.
Okay. We got two more, two more waivers.
Where are we next?
Um, Your Best Move, one thirty, uh, thirty-seven A Prospect Street. Dan Courier. Don, Don Courier.
Oh, that's this one here?
Yeah, Steve Graziano owns the property.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was seeing here. Request for waiver site plan review. Property owner is Steve Graziano, one fifty-two Prospect Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. Uh, phone numbers are listed here. Uh, name of proposed business is Your Best Move. Uh, owner of business is Don Courier. Business owner's address is one ninety-five Maple Shade Avenue, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property address is thirty-seven A Prospect Street. Uh, number of employees is one. Owner is commissioned based on, is based not on employee. Uh, summary of business is real estate. The application was signed by the property owner and dated May twenty-first, twenty-fourteen. Signature of business applicant has not been signed.
I'll have her sign it when she picks up her papers.
Okay.
So, this is in Steve's building, or in that little, um, terminal?
It, it faces Shaker Road.
Yeah.
It's the back of that building.
That, that office, yeah.
Right, which is under special permit, but it's allowed, that office space is part of the allowed use.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the building where only one personal care facility can be, but a real estate agent wouldn't fall under that, so, um, to me, that's an allowed use in there.
Make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
A second, and under further discussion. You were gonna ask.
Yes, I was.
Contingent upon the application being signed by the business applicant.
And, um, they don't have a sign permit, so they'll have to come in for a sign permit after that.
Right.
That's all I had. Ty, anything?
No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is a waiver of site for, oh, this one's, this one's all you.
I can tell already.
Yeah.
For a home office insulation business at forty-three White Ave.
Evgeny Yermynikov.
Yermnikov.
Okay, I'm gonna say this fast while it's still in my mind.
Evgeny Yermnikov.
Uh, request for waiver site plan review, Evgeny Yermnikov.
There you go.
Nice. Perfect.
Forty-three White Avenue, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is YNY Spray Foam Insulation. Thank goodness he didn't use his real name for that company name. Uh, owner of business is the same. Property owner's address is the same. Property address is the same. Uh, property district is residential C. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation, hmm.
Oh, um, variable.
That's variable?
Well, yes. That's why I ended up filling it out for them.
Thank you very much.
There.
Um, apparently, this word is variable. Which isn't spelled correctly. Number of employees is one. Uh, date of last parking plan is, uh, NA. Summary business operation, home office for spray foam business. Uh, commercial vehicle is parked in East Hampton. Uh, pickup truck in garage. No clients at the site. All work is done off-site. The application has been signed and dated October fifteenth, twenty-fourteen.
This is straightforward home office?
Yes. Yes.
Me and I don't have a problem, as long as all like criteria is met. Twenty percent of the floor plan, um, commercial vehicle outside or parked in the garage. Basically, our normal stipulations.
Go ahead, your motion.
A move to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, if I can interject, there's just a couple of things that I have before we get to George's discussion.
Are we just, are we doing the building inspector thing, or no?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Do you wanna do that one, one?
No, you can, you can do that.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure whether you remember or not. I believe that, um, most of you were not on the board, but when Sudacor was approved years ago.
Yeah.
And the site plan was approved for additional parking, should they need it. They don't need it per square footage, but they're adding sixty more employees, so they need to put the, the parking in what was already approved. At the time, the board said, um, that they didn't have to come back before you, as long as they, um, sent you a letter saying what, you know, what they were going to do. Um, once they add the parking spaces, then they're going to notify me. I will give Dan a copy of the plan, ask him to go out and inspect to make sure that the spaces are properly done, um, and that the, uh, the drives are the proper distance. So, this is a letter from Sudacor, um, telling you exactly what I just said.
My only concerns there is, I know there's a fire road that goes all the way around the building.
Yes.
And there's a conservation. Am I correct, George, on the left side?
Yeah.
Yes.
But if I'm correct, this was already pre-approved.
Right.
On the site plan, and they're just letting us know that they're now gonna install it.
Okay.
Right.
It's just additional parking spaces.
As long as it doesn't encroach on any of those two places.
No, it does not.
The, the only question I would have is.
Sure, reasons to record first?
Oh, okay.
Sure. Um, October, uh, sorry, sorry, guys. Uh, October thirteenth, twenty-fourteenth, Robin McDonald, Planning, Zoning Board, Conservation Director, City Sixty Center Square. Notification of project to add parking as per approved plan. Dear Robin, as per, as per our phone conversation dated October ninth, twenty-fourteenth, this letter is notify you of our embarking on the project to expand the parking area at our fifty-two Deer Park Drive facility by eighteen spaces. This will be done in accordance with a plan on file with your office. The project will either be completed by the end of November this year, unless weather conditions do not permit, um, completion. Then it will be completed by spring of twenty-fifteen. We will notify you when the project is complete. Thank you for your consideration. Should you require additional information, please do not feel, feel free to, please feel free to contact me. Phone number is listed here, and is signed by Mike, Quality Assurance and EHS Manager. Thank you.
I have two questions. What was the date of the original plan, of the plan that they're referring to?
Two thousand.
What's? Seven?
I can't remember. I think seven or eight.
Seven or eight. That's, that's recent enough. I don't think we need to have DPW take a look at stormwater again.
No, actually, um, I had a meeting with the engineers and DPW when they were, when that, we first talked about it, just to make sure that their plan was the same as the plan that they had already approved.
Right.
And it was.
It was, okay, fine.
Yep.
Actually, you had mentioned something about conservation land.
Yeah.
Um, again, I'll defer to you. Um, do they?
Did this, this, that?
The other side.
This original plan was approved by conservation?
No.
Okay, with the additional parking on the other side of the building?
Right.
Yeah, no, no, I just.
Totally away.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was, what side it was going on.
No, I, I think that's wonderful that a company that actually made an agreement to let us know when they were gonna do it is actually letting us know. Um, I think it's great.
They're a great company.
I, I have no problems with it whatsoever, and.
I'm, I'm really happy that they're adding sixty jobs.
Yeah.
You do.
That's awesome.
Okay, so that's the letter that.
So, check that one off.
Yeah, I don't think it was on there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, here's a letter dated October twenty-first, twenty-fourteenth, uh, to William Gorman Sleckman, Sixty Center Square, East Long Meadow, regarding zoning enforcement officer lack of response. Dear Mr. Gorman, as you are aware, the planning board issued a request to the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer on September twenty-fourth, twenty-fourteen, asking for a written opinion in his official capacity as zoning enforcement officer as to the signage requirements in the Industrial Garden District. Having received no response on October seventh, twenty-fourteen, the board sent a reminder letter to Mr. Halyer against, again, asking for a response to their request. To date, Mr. Halyer has not responded in any way to the board's requests. As you are the liaison to the billing department and the billing inspector slash zoning enforcement officer, we are writing to you as his supervisor to request that you speak with him regarding this issue. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact me or the office at, contribute, or the office at your convenience. Very truly yours, Michael Carabetta, Chairman.
And we can change that, too.
Sorry.
Sounds good. I like it.
Wanna sign in, Sandro? Cross the, cross the name.
Yep.
And, um, Ralph did send some changes on the minutes, however, they were late, too late for Donna to do anything.
Sorry.
Three fifty-three. So, we'll, we'll have to wait. She hasn't had a chance to.
Couldn't do it in seven minutes?
I know.
I highlighted all of them.
Were there a lot of changes, Ralph?
Um, no, actually.
All right, let's move on to the search area.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, last thing is George's.
I just wanna make the board aware that, um, the state, um, is developing a land use priority plan map for, um, the Pioneer Valley area, the Pioneer, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission jurisdictional area, um, based on some prior mapping that was done by PVPC. Um, what this does is to designate certain parts of each town for either priority development or priority preservation. Um, they have not yet asked for our specific input on this. I was told that they would do so sometime in October or November, but the meeting has not yet been scheduled. Uh, for our town, this is not as significant as it is for other towns. The main impact it would have is, um, that areas that are designated for priority protection would, um, go to the head of the, the, um, line for money for protection, and those for development, priority development, go to the head of the line for development. Unfortunately, East Long Meadow does not get money from the state for either of those things because, uh, we are not considered to be a, uh, community that is in need of those funds. Uh, we have, our, our net, our individual average income is too high. Basically, uh, property taxes are, are high enough that we're not considered to be an area that, uh, is deserving of such funds. But I think it's very important that, um, we review what the state, the areas the state is proposing, and, uh, that we, I, I certainly will provide comments to them regarding the areas that are, are noted. Unfortunately, we don't have the map from, from the PVPC yet, and hasn't been provided to us.